Final item on tonight's agenda. White Waters Webster Plaza tenant renovation located at 950 Ridge Road. Detective Greg Moyer requests for preliminary environmental site plan approval pending a public hearing to allow modifications in the existing building, including construction of loading dock, demolition, and reconstruction of an additional outdoor storage area and associated site improvements, widening the sidewalk, and addition of ADA parking spaces on a 37.91 acre parcel located in a high-intensity commercial district under section 269-11 of the total town of Webster.
Sir, I've got a little change of pace for you guys. Get away from the signage there. My name's Chase Kramer. I'm with CED. We're representing our client, White Waters. Join me tonight is my colleague Kurt. We're basically going to be redoing the building out there at the...
Can you just say it like a little bit?
Yeah.
Because we have that here.
We're going to be redoing the...
There we go.
Here we go.
Yep.
So we're going to be redoing the building. Out at the Webster's Plaza at 950 Ridge Road. So we're going to be splitting the former Kmart into two spaces. One for a future tenant and then one for a Harbor Freight. In addition to this work, we're going to be expanding the sidewalk out front from seven feet to 12 feet, throwing in some new ADA ramps for the future tenant and Harbor Freight, and then moving out towards... Oh, and then also relocating some of the existing ADA spaces just to meet current compliance and make the ADA spots a little bit more accessible to the future tenants. Moving out towards the back of the building, we're going to be installing a new recessed truck dock, a small building expansion for that truck dock at the rear. Because of the expansion and the recessed truck dock, we're going to have to bump out the drive aisle in the back a little bit to accommodate that. Total disturbance for the site is about less than half an acre, and that's pretty much it.
Probably one thing you should do when you finish drawing is correct the proposed in the future. You've got 41,000 square feet on both.
Correct. Yeah, so the future one is 41,000, and the Harbor Freight's going to be around 16,000 somewhere.
Yeah, you probably should change that.
Absolutely.
You're widening the sidewalk in a way that's carrying it straight across.
Correct.
And match up with the rest of it, all right?
Correct.
And now the back.
Yes.
The back of that building is, I don't think it's Harbor Freight's issue, it's probably one of White Waters', but the area that's got the wood covering all over it there, it's a mess.
Okay.
It's absolutely disgusting.
Yes.
I mean, the bottom's rotted out, there's papers and all sorts of trash stuck under it. I don't know what they're proposing to do with that.
We forwarded on some of these comments to the owner, and they made aware of it. So they said they were looking to take care of that.
I think we should put that in, that be cleaned up and...
Yeah, we could pass that along.
...to preserve good condition.
Sure.
As part of it. Nothing to do with Harbor Freight, it's to do with the building itself, you know?
Correct.
Which is White Waters'. The other thing you've got is your loading dock. You're going to huddle that down, you're going to drop, you've got a drain down in the bottoms, you're dropping down about two or three feet or something?
Correct.
And that still will catch the sewer out there, or that?
So that will not catch the sewer, so we're going to have to install a pump to pump out.
Oh, really?
Yes.
All right.
And then that'll tie into the relocated storm line that runs in the back of the building.
Okay. Yep, I see it there, you've got a stormwater or some pump.
Yep.
Yep, I see it there.
I didn't see it before.
How is Harbor Freight getting your inventory?
I believe they're going to be getting it through the front door, but they didn't have any plans...
Do you want me to answer?
Sure.
I'm Laurie, I'm from Storecrafters.
I have to come up, sorry. Microphone, what's your name?
Hi, my name is Laurie Schindler. I'm from Storecrafters. We've been a Harbor Freight general contractor for 10 years, and we're located here in Rochester. We're going to be the general contractor of record. Harbor Freight's proposing to put in, they bring all their merchandise through the loading dock area, and it delivers two times a month in four trucks.
But your loading dock...
And it's going, if I'm not, it's going where the garden center is, they're proposing to make that the loading dock area. So it's going to be off to the side of the building, not in the back.
So they're going to be just loading through the door there, then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so again, my comment in the PRC was, the loading dock that's proposed, what you're going down and going in with, is that for Ollies and is that for both?
Harbor Freight will have their own loading dock area, they don't share. That's a, because Harbor Freight's taking the end at the garden center over, so off to the side where the garden center is, it's, we'll be taking out the garden center and we'll be opening that, open that up to make that the loading dock area.
Okay, but your loading dock is...
Yeah.
Some kind of a loading dock is...
Yeah, so that'll be for the, that'll be for the future tenant that hasn't been named yet. Because they're going to be installing at the demise wall, so Harbor Freight has the 16,000 square foot portion of the building to the south. They're going to be loading their product from the outdoor storage area.
Okay, but there's, I got you, but my question is, there's no proposed actual loading dock?
Correct.
Where you drive into, right?
Correct.
No, there's not changing the structure of the exterior.
No.
Okay, now the loading dock that you're proposing, that's in the back of where Ollies is?
Yes.
The main one there? That's for Ollies or is that...
That's going to be for the future tenant, they're preparing that for a future tenant.
A future tenant?
Yes.
Does he know who the future tenant is?
Not yet.
But they're preparing a loading dock for somebody they don't even know if they need one?
So I'm Kurt, Kurt's around with Bergman, as Chase mentioned. So White Waters has a tenant in mind, they haven't signed any lease agreements specifically. That tenant would require a loading dock. They also know that there's several other tenants that they've talked to, and as part of that, it makes the space much more marketable to have a separate loading dock. And with Harbor Freight taking that end of the building, you know, there wasn't options for them to be able to access that way, so part of the plan is to make that more marketable. And hopefully, the tenant that they have in mind will be signed as soon as they get in.
Okay, so where you say future tenant, right now?
Correct.
That's not where Ollies is?
Correct, it's not. So Ollies is just up north, yeah.
Ollies is up between, too?
Yeah. Ollies loading dock is actually, is you go up the building wall, you kind of go around right on the outside corner there, the north, you know, so...
Okay.
You know, it's a little hard to see from here, but the loading dock is on the back corner, so where we're at in the loading dock is down here, and Ollies, their trucks come up and back in over here.
Okay, so that loading dock you're proposing is the one you're digging out?
It is a recessed.
Lower down?
Yep.
That's for that future tenant?
Correct.
I got it, okay.
Yeah, and it actually accesses like the warehouse area in the back of the building, which was the former Kmart spot, so that's why that dock is positioned there, because it's kind of in that back of house. There's a mess in the storage area, things like that back there that make it more susceptible to the truck deliveries.
Okay.
And exchange of the building.
Okay, is there anything else that you can... So what you're saying is in that former Kmart building, there's going to be three businesses?
No, just two. Just Harbor Freight and whatever future tenant.
Well, Ollies is there, too.
Well, is Ollies, was that part of the Kmart? Okay, yeah.
Yeah, Ollies is part of it.
It's pretty, I wasn't sure how that was divided, because there is a demise wall that's right there, it's part of the Kmart.
That was a awfully big Kmart then.
Ollies, Ollies comes right down to this.
No, there's a space in the middle.
Ollies is over here.
Yeah, it's a little hard to see on this map, but you can see there, so there's a kind of about, it's almost a third really, although Harbor Freight's not really taking a third of the building, because they kind of have a back of house, but you can see there's where that demise wall is. So I guess this was the total Kmart footprint. Ollies has this piece up here, which is kind of this chunk, then there's the future tenant. That kind of L's around.
Okay.
There is one other quick change. So the plans that we originally submitted had the sidewalk, as part of White Waters, had it continuing all the way down in front of that garden center, which is down by the Harbor Freight. We since found out that, you know, Harbor Freight's responsibility cuts off at the corner there, so on our plans that we'll submit for signatures and things like that, we just show that kind of hashed out and saved by others. That sidewalk will be built, but it's not part of the landlord or White Water's responsibility for that piece. Harbor Freight will be building that.
It'll go out in the same length?
Same, same way, yeah. Yeah, it just won't, just White Water won't be building that, so our drawings will be a little bit different in that corner.
Yeah, not a big issue?
Yeah, no, just a coordination.
So Harbor Freight, then you'd be putting doors on the side over here for loading and so on, right?
Correct. It'll be a roll-up door.
Yep. Okay. Yeah, the biggest concern I've got with this, though, is the back of that building. That's a really, really rough shape, I don't know what. It has nothing to do with Harbor Freight, it's White Waters'. I don't know what you can do with that, but that's not a pretty picture back there. Anybody got any ideas? I don't know.
So if you make it a stipulation, I will tell you in 10 years of doing Harbor Freight, they won't turn over a store with that look. I've been to the space, I did the initial site visit, so I know what you're referring to. As the general contractor, because that's visible to where the customers will be parking, Harbor Freight will work with the landlord on their behalf, and they will clean that up. Harbor Freight won't open a store with that back there like that.
So if we put that in a resolution, then we're...
The Harbor Freight will make sure it gets cleaned up.
Looking for some cooperation.
Yep, as the general contractor, we'll work with the landlord to make sure it's cleaned up.
Okay, all right. Anything else? Is there preliminary...
Would that go in, this is the site plan approval from White Waters, so that when we put that in, is this stipulation for this or for the Harbor Freight?
Well, it has...
For both or...
Well, it's all one application. The drawing is one, showing the loading dock over here for future tenant and the proposed Harbor Freight, so it's all one. But the back of that building is, we're only referring to, it's all part of it.
Right, I understand that there was a separate application for Harbor Freight, they had their own application, and this is the White Waters' application, they're two separate things? Or am I misunderstanding that? Because Harbor Freight came in with their own package, their own signage, and their own, what they planned on doing, and this is what the building owner, the landlord, plans to do to the site to get it ready for Harbor Freight to come in. Two separate...
Good question. I don't know, I'm assuming it's all one down...
Yeah, this last month, they were here primarily for signage for the Harbor Freight, and then they were also requesting the approval to reuse the outdoor storage area for the former garden center. But I think because that gentleman was traveling from California, we had tried to consolidate efforts so that everything could get approved through the application tonight, the remaining elements. So everything that's going to occur should be shown on these plans.
Which is what they've got.
Correct.
Okay.
Does that, does that make sense? Is that your understanding of it?
It's tough for me to say, because I don't know what Harbor Freight's responsibility is in terms of what they're doing in that garden center area, so I can't say that I can, I don't know what, I haven't seen any of their plans.
Okay. Well, they were provided at the last meeting, essentially they're converting the fenced-in area to the loading dock that you brought us this morning.
Yes.
And that's going to be fully enclosed, to your understanding? Is that right?
Not enclosed.
Open?
Yeah, it should be open and then, so they can just roll the trucks in and out. Can you, it's, I think for the recording, those are the...
All right, I'm just assuming that everything that's on this drawing is what is being proposed for preliminary approval, loading dock and so on and so forth. And the drawings, I just, I've cut the sheets out that I wanted. You've got the full sheet, they're probably showing. Harbor Freight's side houses where they're proposing doors and stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, it shows that in there, right? So that's the whole drawing, so... As far as Harbor Freight, we don't have any issues with that, correct? There's no issue with anybody down there?
No, no.
With Harbor Freight, I don't have an issue with that, I mean, that's a simple, they're making some modifications, they're not rebuilding a building or anything. Couple of doors being changed. The only concern I've got is the loading dock in the back, but that's for a future tenant, you're saying, back there? That's a... Before us, is this total thing? The whole thing. Yeah, the whole thing. We don't even know who the future tenant's going to be. I don't care. As long as, as long as they're putting the building up and putting the loading dock, whatever they write it to, is the building. If there's anything that needs to be brought in, then you would have to come in saying it's Harbor Freight for, you know, change of use or whatever that you're going to do with it, right?
It's, I just misunderstood, because last time it was a signed package, but we also talked about the garden area, and now we're talking about the rest of it. So I was just trying to clarify what was Harbor Freight, what was White Waters'. So it sounds like for the building itself and the area, the stipulation needs to go into this, whatever, of White Waters' approval for the site. To clean up the back.
So we could approve this thing as presented? I mean, it's...
Right.
Right?
Yeah, the only question that I have is, apparently the building plans that were submitted show a overhead door in the south elevation of the building towards the west end, the back corner.
Right.
For Harbor Freight.
On the side right here?
No. For, yeah, there, yes.
Yes.
Is that correct for the future tenant?
Is there any existing door in there? No, it's just a concrete pad. No, I don't think so, we shouldn't have any door anywhere.
There's a few comments, actually. What, can I just read them?
Yeah.
Have you got them there?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so from community development, they had the widening of the sidewalks along the front plaza, restriping of parking.
Can I get that mic a little closer?
Widening of sidewalks along the front plaza, restriping of parking areas, and addition of ADA accessible parking spaces. And we get the new recessed loading dock in the rear of property. Need to assess impacts to sanitary and storm sewers. Appears that an expansion of the drive aisle behind the plaza will need to be expanded to accommodate the proposed loading dock. And then clarification on site plan and tenant spaces to... Then from the building department, we have plans submitted with building permit applications show Ollies to remain as existing tenant. Plans show an overhead door on the south side of the building.
Yeah, and my concern was, according to what our building inspector told us, it's in the location of the existing transformers and the electrical equipment, so I'm just wondering if...
I'm not su, I mean, I don't see an overhead door in our plans, so I'm confused by the comment, I guess. There's no, if these comments are based on these plans, there's no overhead door specified in these.
Correct, not on the site plan, but the building plans for the building permit for the building.
Now, for Harbor Freight?
No, for that, isn't that space connected to the future tenant space?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, so someone submitted plans for that that show a overhead door where the electrical equipment is.
We didn't, part of our application.
Okay, well, we'll have to, we'll reconcile that, we'll just have to double check if that's...
I don't know, maybe it's getting cross-referenced with the overhead door that Harbor Freight, she was talking about, it was going to be their loading dock.
But that would be...
It wouldn't be over there.
Correct, that would be along the south of the plaza, essentially.
Sure. Yeah, I'm not aware of that, our plans don't show that, so I would have to see that in order to be able to answer that question. As far as I know, there's none planned, I mean, that's why we're putting in front of action.
Correct, that's why we were a little confused when we were going through the process, but yeah, we can, I'll work with the building inspector to clarify that thing.
Okay.
I just wanted to confirm that there was no door proposed.
And there would be no site improvements that I would know, that would be a building permit if you involved, right?
Actually, Mark's got the, seeing the pictures from the maps of Harbor Freight that they were in at the corner?
Right.
I'm going through that right now.
Okay, this shows where the doors are, here, Harbor Freight. Okay, the south elevation is showing an overhead door and a man door. So is this new? I don't know.
Is that from last year?
It's from last year. March 28, yeah.
Certainly, are you talking about what's in front of us right now?
Yeah, but see, they're talking about the doors, and the plans we've got don't show any, you know?
No. So then there's no doors?
No. None on the side.
Although, you know what? If they put doors in, is it bad?
Well, it's just there's a...
It's not really changing everything.
It's not a site plan issue.
No, I'm looking at this right here, south elevation.
Yeah, so I think that's the Harbor Freight.
Yeah.
That's the door that she's talking about, that's going to be by the garden center or whatever. It's not in the, that's not in the tenant's base, that's in the Harbor Freight. It's going to be Harbor Freight's loading dock. And there are no site, you know, site changes, that's a building permit.
Yeah, no, I agree, that's what I was just saying.
I think it's the way they have that draw, that line hash through there, that's not the entire building, it looks as though that's the corner, but I have a feeling that you're just looking at, I think you're just looking at this piece of the building, and that door is right here. It's not in the tenant's base. I think it's here, I don't know why, there's a transformer over there, that's a little confusing, but I guess regardless, there are any site plan approval items associated with it.
Correct.
Yeah, we have to put in, have to...
I suppose. I mean, a site plan, a sign... I suppose we can do, I mean, I'm looking, so prove it out. We're proving this drawing here, it doesn't show any of that. Prove this the way it is, and they've got the loading dock in the back, they widened the asphalt, which was a concern to go around, correct? They did that. So they've meant everything subject to PRC, in my opinion. That would, that would allow us to give approval for what they're showing. The only thing that we don't know is what, where they're cutting openings for Harbor Freight, the doors. And we could make that subject to engineering, wouldn't we?
Yeah.
John, what do you think of that? I'm sorry. John, you there?
I think we lost John.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so I don't think that, I think that we could handle these remaining issues with the building.
That's what I'm thinking, the building, here where the door goes, you know?
Right.
If there's electrical, that's up to the town, to the engineer?
Correct. If it needs to be relocated, it sounds like it doesn't, and I think so.
So we can keep moving with this?
I agree.
And then deal with Harbor Freight's cuts and so on and so forth?
Right.
The subdivision?
Correct.
And we could put that as, you know, your town administration.
Yeah. All right. The only other thing I want to mention is that we did not find record of easement over the sanitary sewer pump, so we looked to White Waters to potentially grant us an easement so that we can have rights to maintain the sewer that's back there. Is that something?
Yeah, I mean, I would say just reach out to Greg at White Waters and discuss that with them. I can't imagine that they would be opposed to that, because it is the house, or, yeah, it's private.
It is, yeah.
Yeah, so it seems to make sense, and I think we allot enough room, there's enough clearance and stuff to maintain that.
Okay.
I don't see why that would be a problem, but just talk to them.
Okay.
Well, okay, so let's back right off to what we've got for us. Talking about widening the back grid out in front, putting in the loading dock, basically in the back. One of the concerns was to still have the width for, you're showing that, you widen the asphalt to go around that. Provisions for pump out for water down into the pit. Anything else you guys see? I don't see anything else that's concerned for the site.
Provision to come out the back.
Yeah. All right, well, when, again, this is a public hearing, I don't know if there's anyone here wishing to speak either for or against this, Dr. Archer. That's me, anyone close to public hearing, bring it back for more concerns?
We can just reiterate everything that we're going to do, like correct the square footage, you know?
Yeah, we can move through that.
Yeah.
All right, what we want to do is correct the drawing, you know, the square footage numbers you can have here. Well, let's put it in a resolution, if you don't have it. So why don't you do CECA first, we'll do a preliminary. Go ahead, Mark, go ahead with the preliminary.
The CECA?
Yeah, CECA.
Tom goes to planning board, consider the request by applicant Greg Moyer to modify the existing building construction of a loading dock, demolition and reconstruction of an existing outside storage area, and associated site improvement located at 950 Ridge Road, a 37.91 acre parcel, having SBL number 079.15-1-1.312. The planning board classifies the proposed action to be a type 2 action under section 617.5 subsection C, subsection 2, and subsection 9 of the state environmental review CECA regulations, and therefore is not subject to further review.
Okay, we have a motion, give a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, may I ask, we have a motion for preliminary approval for Webster Square. White Waters Webster Plaza tenant renovations at 950 Ridge Road, subject to PRC tamment. Subject to all approvals should be constructed according to specifications of the town revenue. All site work can be confirmed as the town of Webster. Apply with all requirements of any state, county, or town agency. And let the final plans, we need the square footage for each space? Yeah, correct, correct the square footage, proposed square footage. They both show 41,000 square feet, it's just a title, right? You know, let's just make it, you clean up the rear of that building? And keep it that way? Yeah, we'd like to make it a little firmer than that, I don't got it. Yeah, we can make it a little firmer than that, I don't know. The current wood siding should be renovated and repaired, yes. Whatever. Yeah, that's it. Yeah.
And we also need, um.
I don't think so, David, I think we covered it. Make it subject to PRC. Oh, did you put that?
Yeah. Alright, so subject to the drawing.
Yeah, you can use the SPS.
Project number drawing dated C twenty-three.
You got it?
Project number twenty-three hundred two three sixty. Two three hundred sixty.
Alright, that's it, then, then the motion, Greg, you need a second.
Yes.
So sorry, we second.
Sorry.
Okay, all in favor, single five and a half?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay, that part is done, now we have your final approval on this. Well, go ahead, David, let's just.
Okay, we have the final approval for White Waters Plaza tenant renovations and nine fifty Ridge Road. Subject to project within the tenants. Subject to preliminary approval conditions. Subject to all applicable governmental fees. Subject to department public group approval.
That, and that one there will cover the work that would be done by the county. A little word of open use and so on and, and, um, of course.
Subject to construction should occur within a year of the planning board. Explanatory by two, two thousand four. Conditions of planning and final approval are depicted on a copy page in the planning design plan.
Any other credit for this?
Are you gonna be tapping in or doing any work modifications to the storm sewer?
Storm sewer, storm sewer is private. Um, we do need to do some improvements, cause we need to pump, it's just the ladder that runs across the back of the building. Has to be pumped out around the new truck dock and then we're gonna tie that truck dock frame into it. So it's just kind of a relocation of that main. Nope, it's probably private, isn't it?
So, yeah, so there's no need to put.
I think that would be pumping.
Yeah, I don't, and the sanitary isn't being.
Just the storm, all the grounds are, are aware of that, somebody.
Alright, see, I don't see what you can go to now. Alright, uh, that's your motion there?
Yep.
And you put the year, one year, okay. Um, you have a motion, do you second?
I'll second.
I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Okay, you're all set.
Greg.
Preliminary and final, hey, good luck with this project.
Yeah, it'd be nice to have somebody in the old space, right?
Yes, well.
If I, if you can fill up old retail space.
I know it.